Okay, President Wyman, it looks as if the the meeting is recorded and anyone in attendance that is not on council, mayor, or a presenter for development has audio access but not video, so you cannot see them, but they can see us.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Baltimore Borough Council Regular Meeting, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Begin with a roll call.
President Wyman?
Here.
Vice President Cresser?
You're muted, John.
Here.
Councilmember Delicio? Is absent. Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Kaler? Mayor, you're muted. And Manager Definis?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, rise for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For the three sovereign nations which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to God. Very good. Mr. Stevens, provide our invocation.
My heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of this day and for your many blessings upon us and our community. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our residents and as you guide us and give us wisdom in all that we do. In grace in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Yeah, we had the original agenda provided. Is there an update on the agenda itself, Jamie? I didn't see it either.
No, the only updates that were made to the council meeting packet were specifically for the forty-three Roosevelt, which was the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter. Also, the solicitor has an updated resolution with a few changes that she will discuss under Old Business and a updated bill list.
Okay, thank you. Right, so agenda is presented with the updated bill list and those items just described. Do I have a motion for approval? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ferguson, second by Counselor Cresser. Any other changes or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion's been approved. Continue with the minutes of the February third workshop, February seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one regular meetings for approval tonight. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ferguson's been seconded by Counselor Cresser. Anyone have any changes to be noted? Corrections? Not all those in favor of motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion's approved. Thank you again, Jamie. Nice job. Okay, item three on the agenda is our public input. Anyone wishing to address council, please state your name and address.
At this time, President Wyman, I do not see anyone in attendance using the Zoom hand raising function to address Borough Council.
Hey, there was a email message earlier provided by Mr. Wilcox. Everyone has received that. That was in regards to discussion on the sewer lateral ordinance. It's not on tonight's agenda because of our request to gather additional information. There was some information there that he also provided that will be helpful. And once we're comfortable upon receipt of more information for discussion, it'll be back on the agenda. Then we're good to go forward. Go to good item four, our announcements, Mr. Definis.
The Hark is scheduled to meet Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, eight a.m. via Zoom. Registration is required. Zoning Hearing Board is scheduled to meet on the four sixty-one South Main Street zoning request. It's Tuesday, March thirtieth at seven p.m. via Zoom. Registration is required. Borough office will be closed on Friday, April second, in observance of the Easter holiday. And the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet April fifth at seven p.m. via Zoom and/or in-person registration is required for Zoom attendees.
Thank you. Anyone have any other dates to highlight?
I'm sorry, the next Borough Council meetings are April seventh, the workshop, and April twenty-first, the regular meeting, both at seven thirty. Via Zoom, registration is required.
Okay. Very good. And ready to move into the old business and discussion items, first being Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh four regarding forty-three Roosevelt Avenue.
Yeah, I'd like to let Borough Council know that I did email you a new version of this resolution. And I want to tell you what was changed, in case you didn't have a chance to look at it before you got on tonight. I took off the requested waiver for parking lot requirements because it's no longer requested or needed. I put in its place a waiver from Engineering Standard one oh eight point one A from the requirement to provide a building setback line to be measured from the edge of the proposed stormwater management easement rather than from the property line. Because they had requested that waiver in their letter, and I did not have that one in the resolution. So other than that, there were no changes to the draft resolution that you got in your packets last week.
Okay. And trying to go back and forth here, is the Montgomery County letter included in the updated package? Did you say?
Yes, we did receive a Montgomery County letter. It's very thin. It says they have no objections, but it doesn't really say anything else. You do have that.
Okay, now I just got to it. There it is on the screen.
And Jamie had included and probably could show on her screen, I think in Ariel, Jamie, didn't you, of the of the development?
There's this one and then this as well.
And both the developer and his attorney are here, Mr. President.
Okay. So I just want to once again mention including the address used by the Montgomery County Planning Commission of North Gerard Terrace. I don't believe is accurate.
I believe, John, we discussed this. I believe it's Gerard Avenue, but I'll check it real quick.
Correct. So from a technical standpoint, Kate, do we need to change the resolution?
Well, the resolution talks in terms of forty-three Roosevelt Avenue and its preliminary. So I guess we can ask that the address be fixed on the final plans.
Okay.
The developer's here, and I don't know whether he has an opinion or on that or not.
It's my understanding is North Gerard Terrace. It's a little confusing. It has been for years there with, I think there's another Gerard Avenue in the borough. But Mr. Definis, I think, is looking that up for confirmation.
So it's South Gerard Terrace is what's referenced in as, as the one street, and that starts at starts, but I believe one oh, one hundred South Gerard Terrace and goes through to one twenty-four. And the properties that are on what is referenced as North Gerard are actually eight Gerard Avenue, nine Gerard Avenue, and ten Gerard Avenue. As a matter of fact, I'm sorry, starting at seven, and Mr. Hurley, they're all in your name. And it's seven Gerard Avenue, eight Gerard Avenue, nine, and ten Gerard Avenue. And that's as, as in the tax duplicate that comes from the county. So that's the official record of the address is the tax duplicate from the county.
So do we, do we go to the assessment office, Kate, to, when they assign parcels to make sure what the street address is that they're using? Where does that come from?
What I'll do, John, is I will, I will work with the developer to assign the addresses, the number addresses, and with the Utilities Department here, for the billing purposes. And then I will check with the Board of Assessments. They will also, and once the Board of Assessment says, yes, you can use those addresses, I will include the emergency services nine one one for the CAD system as well as the post office. We just did that recently. We went through this whole task recently with readdressing the property at one twenty-two and a half Tommetson Avenue.
Yes, okay.
So all that function starts here in the borough with identifying what the numbers will be on the, on the properties. But we will address them as Gerard Avenue, because that's, that's what is noted in the tax duplicate from the county, from the Board of Assessment.
Thank you, very good.
So from that perspective, Mr. Hurley, I think it would be good if your final plans had the, had that add, those correct addresses on them.
And I guess the confuse, some of the confusion comes in, the property wasn't forty-three Roosevelt, but they're gonna front on Gerard Avenue.
Right, but for purposes of tonight, I actually referenced its tax parcel number and forty-three Roosevelt Avenue. So there's no doubt which plan you're approving.
Right, correct.
Sometimes a developer has an opinion on what he wants the numbers to be, but I don't see that as an issue here, is it?
No.
He's indicating it's not a problem, so we'll go with Mike's suggestion of getting the numbers for them.
Okay. Again, so just technically, page two, section one A, references North Gerard Terrace. The last phrase. Want to change that to Gerard Avenue?
All right, wait a second.
I see it.
Just say here Gerard Terrace. You wanted to say Gerard Avenue, John?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yes, I can make that change and then address this to the applicant and his attorney. Doing these meetings with Zoom, it's taking us a little time to get signatures anyway. So I will, I'll fix that one A and make that Gerard, Gerard, what, Gerard Terrace?
Avenue.
Avenue. North Gerard or?
Gerard, in the Board of Assessment tax duplicate, the properties on that street that are owned by Mr. Hurley, seven, eight, nine, and ten are all noted as Gerard Avenue. Seven Gerard Avenue, eight Gerard Avenue, nine Gerard Avenue, and ten Gerard Avenue.
Mr. Definis, I agree with you. They are listed that. When you type in your GPS those addresses, it takes you to another Gerard and possibly in Hatfield Township. When we lease our units next door, they use North Gerard Terrace in their GPS, and it gets you to the subject property. But when you type in north, or you type in Gerard Avenue, it takes you to another Gerard of More Villa Road. So there's been confusion with that over the years, so this might be a good time to straighten it all out for the final plan.
So listen, you're right, and these are all your properties on this road.
Right.
Is there any other properties going to be on the road that would have to be notified besides you?
No.
So then you would prefer them to be called North Gerard Terrace?
It would, it makes a lot, just for letting people know, but I guess for emergency services, if you know, nine one one, here's nine Gerard Avenue, there's potentially two they can go to.
Okay.
Both with Hatfield post address, so it gets a little confusing.
So then what I can do is work on seven, eight, nine, and, and ten, changing those addresses to North Gerard Terrace with the Board of Assessment. And then you and I will work on what the, the addresses of the four other properties will be the numbers. I believe they're gonna be on the even side of the street, correct?
That is, no, they're gonna be on the odd side of the street. Seven and nine are on the or nine eleven, whatever it is, or on the left side, if you're going down Gerard, I believe.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we can work that out and then we can sequence them and, and make them, you know, eleven, thirteen. All right?
Right.
Fifteen, seventeen, all right?
Perfect.
But the name of that street will be North Gerard Terrace, so I'm not going to change the resolution.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Good, good.
We'll, we'll do the, we'll do the work in-house and get that changed. Now, Mr. Hurley, we'll discuss offline how we're gonna do that, right?
Perfect.
All right.
Thanks for pointing that out. It's important for emergency services. All right. So are there questions? Okay. Be on for, as an action item later. Okay, five B is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh five. PMEA Voting Delegate and Executive Board Designee that we discussed briefly last meeting, gonna be nominating, designating Jamie with Mike as alternate. That's also one for action. Was there any other questions on that?
No.
Okay. We can continue. Item C, Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh six, establishing a new banking account. It'll be a savings account at Harleysville Bank for receipt of the new Delaware Valley Finance Loan Proceeds, so that we can segregate those funds. Looks like the resolution number needs to be corrected on on this. You got it, yeah.
I will do that on the signature copies.
Thank you. Okay. Item D, Pool Advisory, again, last meeting, we talked about Mr. Sweet's letter. That he would like to serve on the pool board. And that's up for action later also.
Sounds sweet to me.
You struck out, John. No laughs.
I saw a grin.
It was a good try.
You'll laugh later.
Okay.
One of those delayed ones.
Item A. Have zoning hearing board advertisement for four sixty-one South Main Street. That is regarding the sign.
Right, you had authorized me to go because this in part involves the zoning officer and an enforcement issue. So I will be attending on Borough Council's behalf, you know, basically to represent the zoning officer.
Okay. And last item under Old Business was the two thousand and twenty-one roadway resurfacing bid results. And a couple more favorable numbers here, I believe. Update us on this, please.
Yes, they, the bids came in a little bit lower than, than anticipated. The, the, we met with, we had a discussion yesterday with the engineer on other issues, and this came up as well. This will be on the hopefully, we're gonna have a review letter for the April seventh meeting and then look to maybe award it at the April twenty-first meeting. We're, we're looking at timeframes along with the ADA ramp project. We do not wanna back them up too close and have the ADA ramps not done when the paving starts. We want, want to get done and out of there, and so we're probably gonna have to wait till the April twenty-first meeting to approve this contract.
Okay.
Although yesterday, talking with the, we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor for the ADA ramps, and he sounds like he's gonna be done in a week, so that would be light speed.
Okay. What was the potential start date there? On the ADA?
Jamie, do you have that in front of you? Okay, John, I'll get it before anybody ended the meeting.
No, I just, we're looking at April, May.
They were issued their notice to proceed, so what they were waiting for was
Submittals.
Penn Dot, yep, submittals and like the HOP stuff from Penn Dot. So once those came in, then they were actually free to get started, so I think he was looking more April timeframe. And like Mike stated, he said he wants to be in and out in a week. That'd be light speed, but more power to you.
So was there discussion regarding sidewalks for residents?
Yes, so Public Works Director and myself, Steve Ficker, we did talk about sending out reminder letters and also working with the contractor that the contractor can contact residents that have the X's on their sidewalks and offer them pricing to do the work since they'll be in the area for like mobilizations. Sometimes it cuts down on the cost if the contractor's already in the area. So Stevie and his crew are planning on going out, possibly the end of this week if the weather holds up. If not next week, remarking all the sidewalks with the white X's that the residents need to fix, then another reminder letter, letter will go out, along with the contractor's information.
Great, thank you.
The timeframe is, John, to have the, since the notice to proceed was issued on March third, the next, and then the, we scheduled the pre-construction meeting for, was scheduled for yesterday. The, 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 the start date will be established when they get, receive their approval, submittals by Penn Dot. That should only take, hopefully, a week or so. So they were finishing those up. We're supposed to get them to Chad, and Chad was gonna send them all to Diane to submit to. Diane handles the submittals through, with our contact at Penn Dot. And the substantial completion date is actually scheduled for May third.
Okay.
Since the notice to proceed was, was actually given on March third.
Okay, thank you. So that was all concrete discussion. Any other questions on the paving bids here? It's nice to see a couple of large companies looking for this work. You would think they were tied up with big projects, but got some good pricing from a couple of large firms here. Okay. Ready to go forward? No new business category? So we'll go right into the action items. And the motion for considering approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash oh four on the preliminary approval for forty-three Roosevelt Avenue Development.
I'll make that motion, John.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Cresser. It's been seconded by Counselor Stevens. Anyone additional questions? Timing, moving into final, et cetera?
Mr. Counsel President, don't forget to ask for public comment before you vote on this. I don't know that anybody has any, but it's appropriate under the sunshine law.
Jamie, any hands?
No hands at this time.
Okay. Council, going once. Hearing no further questions. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item B, motion for approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh five, designating Assistant Manager Jamie E. Snyder is the PMEA Voting Delegate and Executive Board Designee.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Counselor Ferguson, second by Counselor Cresser. Any other questions?
I have a question. What's the E stand for, Jamie?
Elizabeth.
Good name.
I'll, I'll let my parents know.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's approved. Item C, motion for approval, Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh six, establishing a new banking account of Harleysville Bank for the Delaware Loan Proceeds.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ferguson, second by Counselor Cresser. Questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion's approved. Next, item D, motion for approval of appointing Stephen Sweet to the Pool Advisory Board for a four-year term to end December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second that.
Motion by Counselor Stevens, second by Counselor Ferguson. Questions? Not all those in favor say aye. Not all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion's been approved. Thank you. And there was an updated bill list that was provided in the new package. And there's the additions. Of motion for approval of the payment of the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Council Ferguson, second by Council Cresser. Questions on the bill list? Had we always paid the salt, road salt purchases directly or I thought maybe we had just paid the township?
No, we paid directly.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no questions. All those in favor of payment of the bills say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion's been approved.
Mission to adjourn.
Second.
Do we have an executive session?
We do.
Personnel?
Personnel litigation.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.